Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month. Any recommendations made on rezone requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments, tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with SHAPE Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, Planning Staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. Once the consent agenda has been approved, those agenda items have been approved and members of the public are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting Planning Staff to present a brief report on that item, second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anybody addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. And as a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 or will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. Good evening. The first order of business tonight is the approval of the consent agenda. Item one would be the approval of the December 1st 2010 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two would be the approval of the Platts. Item three, number 2010-12-03, is a major amendment to subarea C regulations of the Meadows and the River Plan Development District to allow a daycare center as an allowed land use at 2425 South Shirley Avenue. Item number four, number 2010-12-06, is a rezone from the RD Residential District to the RS2 Residential District for allowed uses at South Discovery Avenue and West Browning Item number five, number 2010-12-05, is a final development plan in subarea C of the Prairie Meadows Plan Development District to construct a medical office building at South Minnesota Avenue between La Quinta and 77th Street. Item number six, number 2010-12-10, is a final development plan in subarea G of the Dolly Farm Village Plan Development District to construct a multi-tenant commercial building at 1025 South Highline Place. And that's the extent of the consent agendas. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to have any of those items moved to the regular agenda? Seeing none, are there any commissioners that would like to move any consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. The consent agenda has been approved, and so if your item was one of those on the consent agenda, you're certainly free to head home. The next order of business is the regular agenda. And David, do you have some items for us to consider?
I do. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Dave Loveland, and I'll be representing Planning Staff tonight. I did want to let you know that we have received a request to defer items number eight, nine, and staff would like to defer item number 12 all to the February 2nd Planning Commission meeting.
So we're deferring eight, nine, and 12 this evening?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the regular agenda with moving items, removing items eight, nine, and 12.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. David, item number seven?
Good evening again. Item number seven is a major amendment to subarea A of the Southern Hills Plan Development District to add gas dispensing station and off sale alcohol as allowed land uses. The applicant is Darrell Verick of Verick Commercial Real Estate, who is here tonight. He is also the owner of the property. The location of this item is at the southeast corner of East 57th Street and South MacArthur Lane, representing just over one acre of land. Budging land uses, zoning and land uses to the north is the RD, across 57th Street is the RD and the O Office District, which represents office and two family structures. With compatibility rating of three, to the south is subarea B of the Southern Hills Plan Development District with a multi-tenant mixed-use building currently there. To the east is the C4 Plan Commercial District with a bank branch and other retailers at that location. And to the west is the RA1 Residential District with a multifamily apartment complex. And that has a compatibility rating of four. The Southern Hills Plan Development District was created by Planning Commission and City Council Action in the spring of 2006 to allow an office and retail campus. Final development plan for MacArthur Square was approved in July of 2008. The next year, in May of 2009, a minor amendments and a final development plan were approved to construct the Kentucky Fried Chicken on that out parcel, on the out parcel which we're currently discussing. That has since expired, the approval, and so before you is a proposal to construct a Hy-Vee gas station. As noted, this is a major amendment for the land use only, and the applicant will be required to provide a final development plan for later approval to the Planning Commission. Subject property, as noted, was surrounded by, is surrounded by apartments to the west, mixed-use development to the south. Those two uses serve as effective land use transitions when moving from the commercial land uses to single or two-family residents to the west and south. To the north, across East 57th Street, are two-family residential structures along 57th Street transitioning to single-family residential further to the north. Compatibility concerns are present when placing commercial land uses across an arterial from low-density residential use, but those concerns can be mitigated by effective landscaping, muted signage, or other practices to minimize land use impacts. Concepts of how those mitigation techniques may be placed or constructed on-site have just been provided to our office and should show up on the proposal. One more, Steve. Hy-Vee's provided that to us today, and I think that the applicants are here to discuss that a little further. And as noted, the previous approval for final development plan for Kentucky Fried Chicken has expired and is no longer valid. The applicant is requesting to add gas dispensing station and off sale alcohol as allowed land uses to subarea A of the PD. If approved by the Planning Commission and City Council, a final development plan approval will be required prior to obtaining any building permits. The applicant should take note of subarea regulations and incorporate the requirements into the final development plan when presented to the Planning Commission for approval. The Planning Office has received communication from a neighboring property owner expressing concern over the proposal. That has been provided to you in an addendum. I believe the date of that letter was November 18th, prior to the applicant's having the opportunity to conduct two neighborhood meetings where many of the neighbors were present to discuss those concerns. Representatives of the applicant will be able to discuss the outcome of those neighborhood meetings a little further. But because the subject application generally conforms to the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and complements existing commercial development on the 57th and Cliff intersection, we are recommending approval of the major amendment with subarea regulations as noted in your staff report. So, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David?
David, did you get any clarification as far as their hours of operation?
I haven't.
Have they shared that with you at all?
I haven't discussed that with him.
I'll ask that question then.
Any other questions for David? Thank you, David. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Darrell Verick, 5000 South MacArthur Lane, Suite 103.
Darrell, anything to add?
That letter was written prior to our neighborhood meeting. He was out of town for the neighborhood meeting. He was subsequently, was at the second meeting, and he was okay with everything that we talked about, so.
Okay. Anything else? Questions for Darrell?
Darrell, do you know, this service station is our gas station, do you know what their hours of operation are going to be? Is that a 24-hour operation, or?
I think we should get them up here at the same time. If that's, any more questions for me? I mean, the neighbors are okay with it. I don't think there's anybody here to speak on this. Yeah, I think everybody at our neighborhood meeting is okay with it, so.
Any other questions for Darrell before we talk to the next representative?
Thank you, Darrell.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Stein. I'm with Hy-Vee from 5820 West Town Parkway in West Des Moines, Iowa. The hours of the operation are, of the actual store itself are from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM typically. They're set by the store director, so it may vary slightly, but the pumps themselves, though, can be usable 24 hours a day with the, you know, credit card pay at the pump type operation.
Is this going to be a man station, or you're saying that they'll close and lock the doors at 11?
Correct. They will close and lock the doors at 11.
Somebody could come in and use the machines?
Right. They could drive in, drive up to the dispenser and use the, use the machines, the dispensers.
Thank you. I'm trying to remember, is that store open 24 hours? That Hy-Vee store up there? Is that open all night?
Do you know? It is open, yeah, 24 hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Jeff, is it your plan then to close the one on Cliff?
Yeah, that would be the intent, is to move it over from the current location in the parking lot just north of the store. Move it out to here, yeah.
And is the water feature going to stay?
That's the BMP.
Yeah, yeah, that's a stormwater management BMP that will have to stay.
I believe when it was the KFC, it was going to have a waterfall or a fountain in it, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's, the way it's currently designed, and this is, this mimics the same design, there's no changes whatsoever, but that design was to have water in the bottom of the pond. It's about seven feet deep, and so when it does rain, it fills up, whether the fountain will be feasible or not. We'll have to dig into that once we get the final design done.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? I guess not. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address item number Okay.
Mr. Chair, would it be possible to talk to David one more time? David, there is another service station across the street on the corner. I believe their hours of operation, they're not open all night either. I think they're, do you happen to know their hours?
I think it was 11:00 PM when I looked yesterday. I guess I don't, I didn't have it written down in front of me right now, but they were limited to their hours by the subarea regulations in the district.
If I wanted to add something like that, a stipulation to this, how should I go about doing that, David?
That'd be up to, up to you as the commissioners. You know, if you were to add it as part of the subarea regulations, as part of your recommendation, recommendation to the City Council, we would revise the regulations as they're noted to include what you've chosen. Or you can add it as a stipulation at the time of their final development plan. Now, if you were to add it at this location with the subarea regulations, if they ever wanted to change their hours then, they would have to go back through you and the City Council to alter that regulation. If it were just added as a stipulation in the final development plan, they could come back to petition just to you and wouldn't need to go to the council then.
So it'd probably be more convenient to let everybody think about it and address it at the final development plan.
Yeah, there would be less steps if they were to ever need to come back.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, David.
Yep.
Thank you, David. Well, there isn't anybody in the audience that wishes to address this, so I'd entertain commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval of item number seven.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
My thinking as far as the stipulation, I think this property is bordering residential both to the west and north across the street. I think it's a requirement on the station up at the corner that they have an hours. I believe it's, Dave can double-check that between now and the final development plan. I think that even though the access to the pumps is for 24 hours, I think the actual service part, as far as people driving in and out, I don't think putting a limit to the hours would be considered unreasonable. And that'll be my intent at the time of final development plan approval.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Item seven is approved, and we jump to item 10.
All right. Item number 10 is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to construct an off-premise sign within 600 feet of a school and a park. The applicant is intending to construct a 240-square-foot electronic billboard. I believe the intention is to have an electronic on one side and a static image on the other side. The applicant is, the applicant is Reagan Clemmison, and the owner is Michelle Jackson of Hegel's Western Ware. The location of the, of the subject property is at 2800 West 41st Street on about a quarter of an acre. And the abutting zoning and land uses to the north is RD Residential District with single-family residential properties with compatibility rating of three. To the south, east, and west is all C2 General Commercial District with commercial and retail trade representing that, which represents compatibility of five. The conditional use permit standard is available to you in your staff report. I won't read it verbatim. But again, the location is at 2800 West 41st Street. And the O'Gorman High School, proximity to Parks Open Space and Schools, which is what's triggering the conditional use permit. O'Gorman High School lies within a 600-foot radius to the west of the subject property. Oxbo Park also lies within that same 600-foot radius to the south southwest of the subject property. The, as noted, the sign structure will be in the front portion of the lot, set back 22 feet from the 41st Street right away, which meets our zoning requirements. And to get into the analysis of the, of the site, the proposed location of the billboard, being within the, both O'Gorman High School and Oxbo Park being within 600 feet of those two uses, requires that the applicant obtain a conditional use permit. The applicant has met with representatives from both entities prior to making application with the City Planning Office. Sioux Falls Parks and Recreation did not have any comments or concerns with regard to the proposal. Representatives from the Sioux Falls Catholic Schools have recommended several stipulations to alleviate concern, any concerns that they may have in the future. Those have been noted in your staff report, and we, as part of the recommendation, which I'll get to, we've incorporated some of that into our recommendation for approval. But because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a building permit, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with five conditions. First being any objection raised regarding provocative or offensive messages to the operation of the off-premise sign from the Sioux Falls Catholic Schools, or the Sioux Falls Parks and Recreation Department will require a public review by the Planning Commission. Number two, the off-premise sign will be no larger than 240 square feet in size and no more than 40 feet in height. Number three, the sign's structure shall consist of a single support pole. Number four, the sign shall display one image at a time and shall not have moving video images. And number five, the sign's orientation shall not change from that shown in the submitting renderings, meaning the face of the, of the billboard would be to the east and to the west and not altered from that course. So we have received no comments from the public or from any phone calls, emails, or letters to our office, and so, and I believe that the applicant has met with their neighbors, and he can provide more information on that when he comes up. So that concludes staff report.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David?
David, this picture we're looking at here, is that an existing sign that's in front of Arthur Shoes at the present time? Or is this a rendition of what the sign?
That's a rendition of what it would look like. The Hegel's sign right there with Dakota Sports is existing right now, but the billboard that's shown is a rendering of how that would look.
Is there any concern on staff's part that by saying, "Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and do this one," could the neighbor on either side of it say, "Well, gee, now I want my billboard sign"?
No, there is a requirement for billboards to be separated by 600 feet from each other.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions for David?
Dave, and the Dakota Sports sign is going to stay as well?
Yeah.
That's not going to be removed?
Right. I believe the applicant will need to probably move the billboard from where they've shown just to provide a little bit more separation from that Hegel's sign. I think it's 50 feet that they need to have between them, so. But they'll be able to do that as, you know, during their permitting process, showing where that goes. And as I looked at it with the applicant and with our zoning officials, we were, they have room on the site to be able to meet all the setback requirements.
They do?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for David? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here this evening?
Thank you. My name is Reagan Clemmison. My address is 724 East 61st Street here in Sioux Falls, 57108. The staff report really does a great job of summarizing this product, project. There's two reasons that we're here tonight in need of the conditional use permit. The first is that we're within 600 feet of Oxbo Park, and the second, as you mentioned, we're within 600 feet of the property of O'Gorman. We've been proactive and have met with representatives from both Sioux Falls Parks Department and the Sioux Falls Catholic School System. In both cases, these representatives have expressed that they have no issues with their product, our project. Sioux Falls Parks Department Director, Don Kearney, said he has no problem with the project because the sign would not be visible from the park because of landscaping and buildings blocking view, and because the sign would be perpendicular to the park. Sioux Falls Catholic School System Superintendent, Dr. Tom Larrang, along with school advisors, met with us and said they have no problem with the project for several reasons. The stipulations provided in the report were stipulations that we brought forward to them that we had previously made with the landowners. The sign would not be visible from the school, only from the very south end of the property. The school building itself is over 900 feet away from the location, and because the conditions we brought to them as documented in the report. They have provided a letter, which we've brought today, which is included in the report, giving us their written support for the project. In addition, we have met with surrounding business owners as well as surrounding residents. Up to tonight, no issues or concerns have been raised, and the proposed sign would not interfere with any current on-premise signs. One neighbor here tonight informed us that he has a question for the Planning Department regarding combining an on-premise sign with an off-premise sign, and he's here with us tonight. He can approach podium when I'm finished here. This is a modern sign with a single pole structure, does not create any visible, visual pollution, and it does not break any sign code or city code regulations. We have worked with the Planning Department, communicating with them, providing site plans and renderings for the site, and again, ensuring that everything follows city code. We believe that our project is great for Sioux Falls. I represent our other business partners, including the Jackson family, who's here with us tonight, who has owned Hegel's Western Ware, the site location, for over 100 years. Thank you. At this time, I would love to take any questions.
Reagan, the image that we have on our screen is of the sign, and it says Lamar. Does this have any relationship to Lamar?
It's no relation. We hired a Photoshop expert to put together a mock-up so that you guys would have a better understanding of what it would look like, and he did the best he could. He took an existing sign, which happened to be, have a Lamar stamp on it.
Just curious. Any questions for Reagan?
Mr. Chair, I have one. The sign that's existing then with Hegel's and Dakota Sports, would that go away, or part of that go away, if you're going to be using the bigger one for Hegel's?
Our sign would be the off-premise sign. I believe they're planning on leaving the Hegel's and Dakota Sports sign, which is the on-premise sign, up for now. And that was one of the questions that the owner of Dakota Sports is here with us tonight. He had as far as combining the two, but to my knowledge, both signs would be there.
Any other questions for Reagan?
If I could answer, Ken had a question for Dave. If I could answer to, our sign, being an off-premise sign, would not in any way hinder the surrounding businesses from putting up their own on-premise sign, but nobody within the 600-foot radius could put up another off-premise sign?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address item number 10?
Steve Hoff with Dakota Sports. Been a neighbor of Hegel's for 40 years, and I think you probably have answered my question is, can our signage, which is the Hegel's Dakota Sports sign, be attached to this, or can theirs be attached to ours in any way, so that we just have one sign on the property?
It's a good question. We'll ask staff to come up and help us answer that.
The short answer is no. This is an off-premise sign. Hegel, you know, Dakota Sports or Hegel's could certainly advertise on the off-premise sign, but they wouldn't be able to combine them as a single structure because it's two different types of signage. We're talking about an off-premise and then an, and their on-premise sign.
Didn't you mention a separation requirement?
Yeah, they'd have to be 50 feet apart.
50 foot apart?
Yep.
So, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. I did want to mention too, I left out that there was a sixth stipulation on our recommendation when I was reading that to you on the following page. It's a, "The sign and sign, the sign and structure shall not create traffic safety concerns by emitting any emissions, nor shall it flash or blink light emissions."
David, when you use the term off-present sign, premise sign, you mean it's a sign advertising something other than?
Other than what is onsite.
Other than what is onsite.
That's correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Schmidt?
Jeff Schmidt, representing Planning Staff this evening. Signage is very confusing, and it's changed significantly since the past when we had static signs, and now they're electronic digital signs, and they can change from second to second, hour to hour. And we're continuing to try to change with that market and address our ordinances. I won't be able to address all your questions or issues tonight, but let it be known that the city staff is continuing to look at this issue. Some issues that you're raising already is, you know, could Hegel's put their, Dakota Sports put theirs up there? Dave's already answered that. Generally, no, because they have ordinances that says, if you have a business, you get so much signage for your business. And that's what they have allotted to them. And then all of a sudden, if they start putting it on a digital billboard, then they have more signage than their competitors that don't have billboards, that don't have digital billboards at 240 square feet. So that's the challenge of having electronic message signs versus a freestanding sign. If they had another, just look at it as if they had another large 40-foot-tall, 240-square-foot sign, could they put that up there? No. Well, then why would they be able to put up a 40-foot-tall, 240-square-foot freestanding sign? They can't. But you're allowing a billboard for a Vera and Sanford and McDonald's and across the street for the Chinese restaurant. They can all advertise on this property. What I really came up for is, this first condition is a little different than you've seen before, and I wanted to go on the public record for what Dave and I's intent was here. The applicant did a very good job of meeting with the school- The applicant did a very good job of meeting with the school district, the Catholic school, and the school did write a letter, but we wanted that condition here to try to explain not only to the school and to the applicant, but to planning commission what our intent is here, and I think we did, again, a good job of explaining it, that any objection raised specifically regarding provocative or offensive messages to the operation of off-premise sign, not from anyone driving through, but from the Sioux Falls School, from Sioux Falls Catholic Schools or from the Sioux Falls Parks and Recreation, would require a public review by the planning commission. So again, that, that's why they're here. They're having a conditional use because it's within 600 feet of the Catholic Schools. So again, right now, if a citizen would call and say, I don't like a Vera's up there, well, that's not enough to get a public review. But if the Catholic Schools would contact us and say, that's, we have a problem with that, that's not, again, enough to revoke their conditional use, but it's enough to get a public review in front of this body and have the applicant and the Catholic Schools come before here and say, let's look at the sign, let's look at the image, and have a public discussion to find out if there is really a grounds to have a revocation. That's the condition why we have it here. Not for anything, not for anybody raising it, but specifically why they're getting a conditional use.
Any questions for Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, does that have to be a written objection, or can they just make a phone call to city planning?
The intent was that they would contact us, communicate with us. We didn't want to go so formal as a written, because I think generally in working with the applicant, it's always going to be addressed verbally. They'd contact, you know what, and they'd take care of it. That's, you know, that's the agreement they have with the school, but if it got to a stage where we had to raise it before a public review here, we'd look at the images on the screen and we'd address it, so.
Thank you.
And again, that's the difference between a laptop where it's changing every six seconds or 10 seconds versus a static board, and you see it for a year or six months. It changes so frequently, how do you know if that image is going to be offensive to the school, for a Catholic school today or in a year or 10 years? We don't know. Now we have a condition.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address item number 10? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion related to item 10.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion for approval with the six stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of item number 10 signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign. Item 10 has been approved, and the next item is, is it 11?
I think so, Mr. Chair, number 11.
Okay, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, my name is Steve Randall with the planning department. I'd like to request to see if the applicant is here this evening? The applicant is indicated in your report as being Dan Brablik, Loveland Properties, and apparently is not here this evening to respond to questions.
It's not a relation of David, is it?
Uh, no.
David, is it, Stephen?
So without an applicant, do we need to defer this?
It's up to you if you would like to defer. I can present the report if you like.
I'll ask for commission input. Any thoughts on this? Personally, I looked at this, and it's, it's asking for quite a bit of our consideration, so I think it would be valuable to have a petitioner here, but other thoughts?
I would be willing to make a motion to defer.
We have a precedent of having deferred before when we didn't have an applicant.
We have a motion. Is there a second to defer?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of deferring item 11 signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, we are moving on to item 13, I believe.
Jeff Schmidt, the applicant for 13.
Here he comes.
We have a lot of people here interested in this item. We're getting down to the nitty-gritty, and I know we have public watching, so. Item 13 is the planning commission bylaws. The bylaws get presented to the planning commission to review and adopt. These are your rules, regulations, your general policies that the planning commission acts upon. Really, they're minor changes that we're going through at this point. We update them annually, I think it's been a couple of years really, since we've updated our bylaws, but to highlight some of the things that we've updated this time around is we do have a new comprehensive plan, a new ma, master plan for the planning commission, so we changed that. In regards to our membership and appointment, in the past, you members of the planning commission all generally serve an industry. You represent an industry, but that's not been listed within what your membership and appointment's been. It just said nine members. So now it says, with due regard to a diverse representation of citizens and professionals including architecture, education, real estate, land development, and finances. So again, to clarify that we have a diverse representation on the board and who you represent. Then from that standpoint, probably, you know, most critical is, my title has changed, and so I put my title, in the past, it said an assistant director on here, and I changed, my title was changed, and so I put my new title in here on who's the person that's generally being staffed along with Steve Randall and Dave Loveland through this body. So that's been addressed also. And with that, I'd be glad to take any questions, comments, changes, or edits.
Any questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. I guess I don't need to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address this issue. Steve? Is there a motion to approve the amended bylaws?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I was hoping to study this a little bit more, Mr. Chairperson.
You were supposed to study it before you got here.
Thank you for pointing that out to me. I'm prepared to vote.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving item number 13 signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign. Item 13 is approved. The final item on the agenda, regular agenda tonight is the election of new officers for the coming year, and I would certainly entertain a motion for the chair and vice chair.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to recommend, as chair, Jesse Schmidt, and as vice chair, Commissioner Kenny Dunlap.
That's...
I will.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion? This is your last chance.
Is Jesse being picked on because she's not here tonight, Mr. Chair?
This is your last chance, Kenny, to.
Wow.
Make an alternative motion. Hearing none. All those in favor of Jesse Schmidt being this year's chair, and Kenny Dunlap, the vice chair, signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The only item of business remaining is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move for adjournment.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.